I call to order the meeting of Williamsport City Council Thursday, January 9th, 2020, 7:30 PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Yoder and remain standing for the flag salute.
Lord, let us express our gratitude for the opportunity to serve Williamsport and its mission, for the gifts that we have that enable us to make a difference in the lives of our community, for the chance to do something very special and meaningful with our lives and careers. Let us ask our Heavenly Father to help us embrace the challenge and responsibility we have as leaders, to guide us to lead with integrity and common sense, to give us the wisdom to make intelligent decisions, give us the courage to make the tough decisions, give us the character to make the right decisions. Finally, help us to always be welcoming, inclusive, and open because it is what you have called us to do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of city council minutes dated 12/5/19, 12/12/19, and 12/27/19. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or corrections on the minutes tonight? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests tonight. We'll move to item five, which is a presentation, the quarterly report from Penn Strategies. And welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you. I'd also like Mr. First to come up here, too. Mr. Mayor, Treasurer Grimes, President Allison, members of council, members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to report, provide our quarterly report, which is part of our contractual obligation to the city. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Slaughter on his election and congratulate the new members of council. It was a particular privilege on Monday to see that we have at least four new members of council who are members of my generation and a new mayor, who's the first member of my generation to be elected as mayor and also, of course, historic in the fact that he is the first African-American mayor. It's kind of cool that he's both of those things. So, congratulations, sir, and congratulations to the members of council. In front of each of you, we have a packet. On the right side of the packet is the report. Enclosed in the folder is some biographical information about some of the leadership of our firm and then a brochure that explains what Penn Strategies does. I've had the opportunity to meet all of you. I've had a good opportunity to know most of you, and I think that Councilman Mackey and I are probably the least acquainted, but we've had an opportunity to talk a little bit over the last couple of weeks. First off, item number one, a background with the city of Williamsport. During our most recent contract, Penn Strategies was paid $200,000 over two years to write, manage, and advocate for the grants listed below, which total $4,585,000. That's a million-dollar R cap grant for the levy, which is the only monies that have been secured to date for that project. $200,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for Memorial Park, a $2 million R cap grant for the pajama factory, a $285,000 DEP grant, which, Mr. Winder, we are trying to get extended to count that chipper truck, which would get us to 310, but 285 is where we're at right now. We're working to get the rest of that. And a $1.1 million DEP capital budget line item for the Graffius Run project, and that is in the capital budget that was passed by the House and the Senate and has been forwarded along to the governor for his signature. In addition to securing grants, of course, we've helped to, outside of the formal scope of our contract, we've helped to manage the relationship between the city and the county, which has been a very good partnership for the city of Williamsport in putting together the levy project, which, of course, is, Councilman Allison, I guess you're the only council member who was here for the beginning part of that, as Councilwoman Katz and Councilwoman Mealy are not here. But there was a lot of concern when the levy recertification process began that it was going to be particularly costly for the city taxpayers. Thankfully, to date, with the exception of the monies that had to be spent up front for engineering and other things, as far as the construction side of the levy, it doesn't appear as though any additional city dollars will be needed. And Mr. First will explain a little bit more when the RFPs are going out for that, et cetera. We also worked with Councilwoman Mealy and Councilman Allison and former Council President Williamson to secure a buyer for the old YMCA building. And the nice thing about that is, is that has not cost any tax dollars. It was simply a matter of putting the right people together, and they're very excited about that. We are proud to say that we completed all of this work with absolutely no overages, and we did not charge a single nickel in expenses. So, you know, obviously, our contract did allow for expenses to be charged. We didn't do that. I'm going to ask Mr. First to give you an update on number two, which is the status of current projects and application that the firm's working on.
As we prepared to talk about, two of the things that we're actively working on currently. One is the Phase Two funding, which we have approached and applied to the H2O program and the Commonwealth. We're working very actively with the county on that. And then I'm going to talk about Graffius Run for a few minutes. But as Jason and I talked about today, and what is apparent, as we look at the council members today, four out of five are all new, and the mayor's taken on his position. And what that means is you don't have the history, we suspect, you don't have the history and some of the hard work details that were done between the partners on looking at the levy problem. The levy problem might go six to 10 years where it first started to materialize through the Army Corps of Engineers examination of the infrastructure of the levy where they found deficiencies. These deficiencies are extremely important to the city of Williamsport and the borough of South Williamsport, as well as the county, because if we were to allow the integrity of the dike to deteriorate, of which the Army Corps of Engineer found some serious deficiencies, it could lead to a catastrophic situation, one. Or, two, decertification means that your insurance, your insurance availability is affected by the decertification of the levy. And in layman's terms, if the dike were decertified, it would mean that the dike did not exist for insurance purposes. And you all remember a while back when Shop Vac was approached by their insurance company and said, "Your flood insurance is going to go up by $300,000." And that certainly brought the practical reality of one of the aspects of the levy issue. I could spend a good amount of time in trying to fill the history and some of the technical details of the levy project program, but that would take a long time. And in light of that, there are a series of meetings which are being put into play in terms of dates and some future dates to set that will brief the mayor and the administration and bring the current council up to date, which is the new and existing members. We will meet Monday, the mayor, Mr. Winder, Shannon Rossman, who is the new county director, Lightcoming County Planning Director, and Chelsea Blair, who was actively involved in the levy project and did a lot of work for Fran Majunka before she retired. That meeting will occur Monday to brief the mayor and Mr. Winder so that we can move into a meeting with Senator Yaw on Tuesday to brief him on the H2 application. And then we have asked the county through Chelsea Blair to set up a date when we can brief at a working session the total council and everybody else in the city who we think needs to be brought up and all the significant details of this project. This is a complex project that involves a lot of money, and a lot of work and effort have gone into getting us to where we are. We are being recognized by the Army Corps of Engineer, and an engineering firm was working on that as being very proactive and very practical and very efficient in how we proceed with this complex program. Right now, the approach to funding and solving the problems for the levy are broken into four phases totaling about 13 million. The item that I am going to talk about specifically is Phase Two. Phase Two deals with the cross pipes. And you says, "What the heck is a cross pipe?" Well, don't worry about it, but it is being attacked in terms of the planning, how we're going to manage it, and how we're going to fund it. The H2 program, grant program, is the mechanism we're going to use to approach, and we have already applied for 1.5 million to fund Phase Two and take care of some shortfalls in Phase One, which deals with the relief wells. This application has been submitted to the Commonwealth Financing Authority as of 12:30, and we're waiting to hear whatever questions they may have with that application. That's an important piece in terms of accomplishing Phase Two. As Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, we have the R cap funding for Phase One, which is part of the funding stream that will take care of the relief wells. The bidding for the relief wells by the county, because they have a memorandum and understanding with the city of Williamsport and the borough of South Williamsport, to be the project manager for this, which we gain that efficiency and that resource. According to the update that I got today, that RFP is out and that bidding process is in play. Once those contracts are awarded, under the R cap guidelines, that work will probably commence in the second or third quarter so that we all will see the beginnings, the actual construction beginnings of solving this problem, which can be very, very material to the health and well-being of this region. So, H2 is moving along. You all get more detail over the next week or so as we conduct these series of briefings. Graffius Run? We continue to work on Graffius Run because we know, as we've reported before, that on September 23rd, DEP submitted a $1.1 million request for the capital budget, which will cover the engineering charges of Graffius Run and then begin to supply the funding stream that will be used against whatever the option is that that engineering study produces for us to consider. We know from the R2 engineering report that was done a couple of years ago, Chairman, I think so, and...
Maybe, maybe three.
Maybe three. We saw some initial figures that were based upon a solution of a construction approach relative to the culvert of Graffius Run and the culvert over by the church, and that was a $4 million figure. Well, we really don't know at this point what it's going to cost to solve that problem, but we've already begun to look at funding sources that could handle a grant request of somewhere between $5 and $10 million. We don't know where it's going to be, but we don't want to wait to see who can play in that kind of funding grant. And we're looking at Penn Vest, and we're also looking at some of the federal entities, the Economic Development Administration, or other federal entities that could be used to provide the funding to finally solve that 40-year-old problem. I even remember as a kid, Graffius Run and playing in it. So, it's been around for a long time, and it's certainly an irritant to us all that we, that it's been allowed to continue to be a problem. I think the light is in front of us to finally solve that problem. So, we're working very hard on the levy side of things, and we're working very hard on thinking ahead on the Graffius Run project.
Thank you, Mr. First. We've gone to item number three, just a brief update on the current political conditions, which most of you are aware of, in Harrisburg. There's a Republican-led General Assembly and a Democratic governor. That's why it's important to have an advocacy firm that has relationships with both political parties, not one that has just relationships with one. And we're proud of the fact that we are a bipartisan or nonpartisan firm. Probably bipartisan is a better word to say than nonpartisan, because we do have relationships with members of both parties. As far as the next steps, Penn Strategies has been on the record for at least the last three years of supporting the concept of an RFP to handle the services similar to what we provide. We believe that the best way for a municipality the size of the city of Williamsport to ensure that their city is run in an efficient and transparent manner is to put out an RFP for our services. However, we would like to continue our relationship with the city of Williamsport, and if the mayor is in favor, we would like to offer a contract extension at our next council meeting, which would have a 15-day out, which would allow us to continue the important work that we've done on behalf of the city while the administration makes a determination as to whether or not they would like to develop an RFP. Obviously, our intention would be to respond to that, you know, in a fair manner and transparent manner. And the nice thing about the contract that we're going to be offering to you is that it does allow the administration time to develop that RFP. And if you were to decide to go in another direction and choose another firm to do the work that we're currently doing, at the same council meeting that you would hire that firm, you could exercise the 15-day out. And since the budget that you all passed recently does include the funding necessary to pay for us or a new firm, there would be no cost overages for the city of Williamsport. So, I respectfully offer that to you. We'd love to have an opportunity to continue to work for the city, particularly on those two open items. But, you know, over the course of the future, you know, we have had some success, obviously, outside of our contract. Whenever we've been asked to pursue funds, for example, with the Memorial Park, we don't necessarily look at the contract and say, "Well, you know, we're going to need a separate contract to write this grant and advocate for it." We believe that we've been very fair with the city, and we would just ask for the same fairness in return, and would be happy to answer any questions from the mayor's administration or members of council.
Any questions from council tonight? I guess not tonight. Appreciate the presentation, Mr. Fitzgerald, and just so people at home or watching, wherever they are, or maybe will see this on a replay later, I think it's normal for people to question why we need consultants and those types of organizations or firms representing us. We have to work within the context of the system that the governments, various governments, state and federal are set up by, within, and the way that they have structured grants and all those kinds of things requires someone who's able to be there and spend a lot of time talking to different entities and different individuals to get us on the radar. And we've been fortunate that we've had a lot of good people on our behalf, and especially in the state, we have Senator Yaw, who's been a great advocate for the city, as well as the whole region. So, that's why we hire a consultant. Otherwise, we'd have somebody on our payroll full-time that we'd have to have more than, we'd have to have a firm inside the city government that would cost us pensions and benefits and everything like that. So, it's a necessary function of operating as a city in this day and age.
And the city currently has three firms that are doing what we're doing. Keller Partners, we think that there's three, maybe there's more. Keller Partners, Dollar Development, and us. And we are very proud of our record, as I said, particularly with the fact that we were able to help to deliver, you know, over $4.5 million, that we did it at $200,000 over a two-year period, never had a single overage on our contract, and never charged an expense. And I mean, it's probably a good thing to look at for everybody.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Well, it's also that the RFP is our means of making sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, you know, make sure we're hunting for the best price. So, you know, the firm investment's great, but, you know, the RFP is a means of making sure that we're getting the best we can get.
Absolutely. And as I said, we've been excited to compete for that for a long time, so hopefully that's the direction that we go. Competition's a good thing. And as I said before, during the interim period, I think that it's important to continue the work that we're doing so that there's no gap in that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. First. Look forward to the updates coming. We'll move to item six, resolution authorizing a change in signatory. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
Resolution authorizing the submittal and modification of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation dot grant object.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
In a second. Okay. Motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. Winder.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine.
This is a simple resolution, changing the title on all dot grant signatures through PennDOT. It is just naming the general manager of RVT as the authorized signer.
It's just a name change.
Yep.
Authorizing. Questions from council members? Is there, someone mentioned, is there, we don't, there's not two individuals, there's not a backup signer, it's just always one?
Yes, and that's the reason why we're changing it to the general manager versus the actual name.
Okay. So, it's the position we're authorizing, not an individual?
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Well, just one here. Could we add language to be, you know, the second-in-command to be another signatory? Just if the...
I would just have to check with PennDOT to make sure we can do it that way.
Okay. Just if that person's out sick that week, then...
Right.
We can add that later if we need it to.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions? Mrs. Frank, in motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. I'm going to suspend the rules tonight. There was a late addition, very late. Do you care to, before we even have a motion, would you care to explain?
How this one came up?
Yeah.
Just to keep things moving with the dot grant process, there's a second form, or a second resolution has to be presented that's allowing the general manager of River Valley Transit be authorized official and be directed to assign roles within dot grants on its behalf. So, it's just a second part of that original resolution, and it just didn't make it to me until after 4 o'clock.
Okay.
And there's going to be a few more that come down the line just to clean things up, but we'll definitely get them to you in a timely fashion.
Great. Is there a motion on this one?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Thank you. Further discussion from council?
Same question.
Yeah, yeah, essentially same.
Yeah, well, same question in that...
Yeah, we'll look into that part, too.
Going to be a secondary.
We'll just simply bring another resolution to add someone else.
We were talking about the, this resolution a little bit, a few minutes before the meeting started, about the last part of the first paragraph, assign roles within dot grants on its behalf. Is dot grants a phrase or...
It's the site that you actually use to, like, if there's a PennDOT project that the city's involved in, you know, a lot of times you have to get in there and review the bid documents, and you have to release each phase of it, give the approval for payment. It's pretty extensive. They've just gone paperless, and now it's all online.
Okay.
So, my question would be then, if they change the name of the site, will we be tripped up from having authorization under this ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Will we be tripped up under this ordinance if they change the name of that site?
If they change the site, no.
Okay. That's it.
I, yeah, I don't know. I guess it just refers to wherever we would go.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if they change the site, I'm sure we'll have to come back for more resolutions for signatories and all that stuff, so...
Yeah. Okay. We'll go with this for now.
They were using paper for eternity and just suddenly decided to go to this, so hopefully they'll stick with it for a while.
Yeah. Okay, so essentially, this just gets us up to speed at some house cleaning. Any other questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Mr. Winder. Move to item seven, resolution of city council authorizing and empowering the city treasurer to impose costs of collection. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Resolution of the governing board of the city of Williamsport, Lightcoming County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and empowering the city treasurer to impose costs of collections on delinquent taxes.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Grimes, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Allison, members of council. This resolution is in regards to us collecting our business-privileged mercantile and local service taxes in-house for 2020, which was previously collected by Burkheimer. This is a cost of collections for delinquent taxes. This would be above and beyond our normal collection efforts. If somebody pays late, they already pay a penalty and interest. This is if we have to file something with the magistrate, if we need litigation work, if we have to send certified letters, those sort of things that cost the city money. It helps to have a method for us to possibly reimburse those costs. Burkheimer had a similar cost of collections. We reduced the scope a little for what we thought was necessary and even reduced some of those fees. This was worked on and reviewed by Austin, our solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Question, council? Oh, first, it was reviewed in Finance Committee. It just so happened that the Finance Committee consisted of Councilman Yoder, so we couldn't have a vote, but all of us were present, so we all kind of participated in it. So, Mr. Yoder, would you address this to your...
Yeah, as Councilman Allison had mentioned, it was a meeting of, or a committee meeting of one this time, so we didn't think of a vote. I feel confident that this would have been forwarded to the full body with a positive recommendation. Treasurer Grimes had mentioned, you know, this is a pretty straightforward piece of legislation. I think it's a net benefit for the taxpayers of Williamsport for a couple of different reasons. We're going to provide probably better customer service, I think, for the taxpayers of Williamsport with this. From talking with Treasurer Grimes in the committee meeting, the fee schedule is actually probably a little bit more cost advantageous for the taxpayer. So, in the event they have delinquent taxes, they will save a little bit of money, and this actually does cover our costs in the aggregate to perform this scope of work for the city. for the city, which is also very beneficial for us, so looks good.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Questions or comments from other council members?
No.
Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. We will move to item eight.
A resolution of the governing board of the city of Williamsport, Lake Coming County, Pennsylvania, authorizing, empowering, and directing the proper officers of the governing body to appoint Attorney Fred Holland of Murphy Butterfield and Holland as its tax hearing officer under and pursuant to 333.10 and 349.09 of the city of Williamsport codified ordinances and the local taxpayer bill of rights for the express purpose of adjudicating appeals thereunder.
That was a mouthful, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you again, I'll try and make the titles easier for future resolutions. All of the resolutions that you'll be reviewing for me tonight are in regards to us collecting the business privilege mercantile and local service tax in-house. Burckheimer, when they were our collector, they were also our tax hearing officer. Many years ago, we moved away from a voluntary tax appeals board because it was hard to find members who were, who were able to make legal decisions on very complex tax matters. And what most places do that have business privilege taxes is they use a tax hearing officer who understands the laws, the intricacies, case law, to be what would, they would pretty much serve as a judge. So how this would work is if somebody would appeal their assessment of taxes, they could go to a hearing, and Fred Holland would serve as the judge, if you will, of this hearing, and then the city would be represented, and the taxpayer would be represented, and then Mr. Holland would be able to make a decision on that tax assessment that was made. It's a much better method because you come to a better decision that possibly doesn't need you to go on to the courts, because Mr. Holland is experienced with this law. The school district used to not only assess, but also collect this tax, and Fred Holland was a solicitor for the school district when they did that, so he is very experienced, he's very comfortable with this, and was happy to serve in the capacity of hearing officer for the city for this tax.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Yoder?
Yes, this also came to the committee of one on Tuesday. Treasurer Grimes summed it up pretty eloquently. The only thing I would add is regarding both item eight and item nine, the primary and secondary hearing officers. We are very fortunate in the city of Williamsport to have both of these individuals willing to work with us. From Treasurer Grimes's feedback, this expertise is very hard to find throughout the state of Pennsylvania, so our primary officer, Mr. Holland here, is an expert in this. He lives locally, which is really great for us. As he will mention, our secondary is probably one of the more premier experts in the state and is fairly close to us as well, so we had kind of talked previously in this meeting about an RFP, you know, a process, what have you, and in looking at the selection process, there are gonna be times where RFPs don't work necessarily. This is probably one of those because of the expertise needed and how few people are well qualified for this, so...
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Frank, and we will move to item nine.
A resolution of the governing board of the city of Williamsport, Lake Coming County, Pennsylvania, authorizing, empowering, and directing the proper officials of the governing board to appoint Attorney Jennifer W. Brown of Flan Walton-Heinbach as its alternate tax hearing officer under and pursuant to 333.10 and 349.09 of the city of Williamsport codified ordinances and the local taxpayer bill of rights for the express purposes of adjudicating appeals thereunder in the event that the tax hearing officer is unable to serve.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you again. This is for the same type of hearing. This would be if Mr. Holland is unavailable to serve as a tax hearing officer, whether it's because of scheduling issues, or it's because of a conflict of interest. This allows us to have an alternate to serve as the tax hearing officer. Attorney Brown is one of the foremost experts in Act 511 taxes in the state, and she is uniquely qualified to serve as a tax hearing officer for the city because she is the attorney with the firm that helped us review all of our ordinances, rules and regulations, helped us draft a few resolutions to clean up a lot of this process that hadn't been visited for a few decades. So she knows the nuances and intricacies of our local business privilege tax, which is different from municipality to municipality. She is serving as the alternate because she is from out of the area, she's not local like Mr. Holland, and she is a little more expensive, but they are both very competent and able to serve in these capacities. And just so you guys know, all of these resolutions, you're probably gonna forget about them because they're gonna be used so infrequently, but we need to have them all to be able to do the collections. This isn't something we're gonna be doing on a daily, weekly, maybe not even a yearly basis. In the last four years, we had one appeal hearing scheduled, and that was settled prior to the hearing, so it's not something that's regularly used.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Other comments or questions? You already covered it from the finance, finance committee. Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. We will move to item 10.
An agreement with Murphy Butterfield and Holland.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, is there a motion?
Moved.
A motion?
So moved.
And a second. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you, that title is much easier to read.
Yeah.
This is an agreement with Murphy Butterfield and Holland. If there are legal services that are needed by my office for collection of business privilege and mercantile tax, again, out of all the Act 511 taxes, these are some of the most complex, with a lot of case law and a lot of intricacies, and without good attorneys and good accountants, you can't properly collect these taxes. We are very fortunate to have two good law firms that the city can use, and especially Mr. Lubin, who has represented the city in court cases in regards to business privilege tax, that understand the law. But if there's a situation where we needed legal services that were either outside the scope of our solicitors, or legal services where there might be a conflict of interest with our solicitors, we would need to have an attorney that we could use to help our office, and this just allows a backup, really, again, not something we're gonna use every day, every month, maybe a few times a year, but it gives us somebody to rely on if we would need it.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Questions from council? So this essentially is a, just a use agreement, we're not paying a retainer or anything like that?
Correct, if we don't, if we don't use them, we won't pay anything.
No other questions, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Move to item 11, tax and revenue anticipation note, in short form, please, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing tax and revenue anticipation note for 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. Pavlak.
Good evening, President Allison and member of council. This resolution's to authorize the city's 2020 tax and revenue anticipation note in the amount of $2 million. As in prior years, this note is structured as a revolving line of credit to assist the city with cash needs until tax revenue begins to arrive in the March, April, May timeframe. The note is similar to the 2019 note, with additional disclosure this year regarding the availability of the LIBRA benchmark. In the event that the LIBRA is discontinued, a new benchmark would be determined, and follow the interest rate range of 2% to 4% listed in the note. As noted in the resolution, any advances or payments for the note will be reported to city council, and we typically do that during the finance committee meetings, with the information disclosed to all council members. This item was discussed on Tuesday at the finance meeting.
And it was. Mr. Yoder?
Yeah, it was discussed at the finance meeting. You know, this is a pretty straightforward resolution. We, I've done this year over a year. A couple of, I think, points to add on to what Mr. Pavlak had mentioned here this evening. This really comes down to, this is a cash flow issue that we face every year, and we are all very well aware of, I think, the financial challenges that we as a third-class city face. The only way to address that so we don't have to do this, it's through, I think, long-term planning in our financial process and our budgeting process. So while we have to do this this year, and are likely gonna have to do this the next couple of years, you know, that is a goal that we all should strive for as a legislative body and as a new administration, and I know that we all will. The other thing to note is, you know, we've been, I think, leveraging M&amp;T Bank for about 14 or 15 years, and they do a lot of work with us, I think they do a very good job for us, but I do think this is something that would be worthy to look at in a more competitive process moving forward. You know, again, we've talked about, a couple of times, RFPs up here. I think there are a number of other banking institutions in addition to M&amp;T that could bring just as much value to the city, and that would be, I think, very eager to work with us. So while I will definitely be supporting this, I think that that is something we should look at for next year when we go to do this. So, that's it.
That's good, thank you for that observation. Other questions or comments?
I think it's also just important for the public to know that we only draw on this line as needed, we don't draw it all out at once.
Right.
We use it as we need it, so sometimes it might not be the entire $2 million.
Right. It's just, it's our fund to go to till our real estate taxes start coming in, and right now, there's always a little bit of a crunch. There was a time there wasn't, but those days are past, and it's kind of crept up a little bit, it's gone up and down, I think we discussed that over the years, the total amount that we've needed, but hopefully it'd make everybody's life easier if we could get that fund balance in there. Other comments? Mr. Banks?
Well, when I was railroading Adam's meeting on Tuesday, I had a couple of questions, and I was wondering if you'd follow up on those. Just for the public, how many years roughly have we been drawing these types of notes?
We've been drawing since, I believe, the early 2000s.
Okay.
We've had a tax anticipation note in place.
And the other one was, roughly, how much interest, you know, I know you can't anticipate this, but over the, over the past few years...
It'll be based on our needs, but over the past two years, we've been under $5,000 for the year.
I think something to say about that is $5,000 in a $2 million loan isn't bad, but the indication of the health of the financial system that we're to have the loan to begin with is really the problem, it's not, it's not the $5,000.
Yeah, you look at it over 20 years, it turns into six figures, which, again, compound that, it's a lot of money.
Right.
So, something to consider potentially, moving forward, you know, I mean, from our meeting on Tuesday, we typically pay this back within, I believe, six or seven months, so it's, you know, from the city's perspective, a very short-term loan. Something we really wanna look at, I don't know if we have, is leveraging city assets to borrow against versus just paying interest, whether it's future cash flows, you know, building, what have you, may save us a little bit of money.
Be interested to talk about that, I mean, we are leveraging our tax revenues for this note, so it'd be interesting to hear your perspective there.
Okay, I think we're finished with that subject. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. We're down to the housekeeping issues, except for filing the codes report of July 2019, public safety minutes of 10:1019, historic preservation minutes of 9:2419, WMWA meeting minutes, October and November of 2019, and WMSA meeting minutes, October and November 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Comments or questions on these minutes? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Announcements, next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, at 7:30 PM, right here in City Hall, council chambers. Our upcoming meetings are Friday, January 10th, at 11:30 AM, the Redevelopment Authority, Monday, January 13th, at noon, Planning Commission, Thursday, January 16th, 10:30 AM, the Zoning Hearing Board, and at 4 PM, the Board of Health. Tuesday, January 21st, 10 AM, Bladed Property, 11:30 AM, Public Safety Meeting, 1 PM, Finance Meeting, 2:30 PM, Public Works Meeting, 6:30 PM, Harb. And then we have our city council meeting. Before we do anything else, I need to announce that we're going to have an executive session for personnel and legal matters after the close of our regular, regular meeting. We have comments from the council tonight? Anybody?
Yeah, just, just real quick, I'd like to remind the public that Dream Week 2020 is coming up. It starts on the 18th with the peace walk at Penn College, and that is at 10 AM. There's a full schedule of events over here by our esteemed reporter, Mark Maroney, from the Sun-Gazette, if you wanna pick up some details about Dream Week, and I'll also post these on my Councilman Facebook page, so...
Other comments or questions? I have two comments. One, I'd like to thank Mrs. Frank for the excellent job she did organizing the inauguration on Monday. It was beyond our expectations, and you thought of everything, and beyond what I imagined, and I think we all appreciated the effort, so could we give her a round of applause? And I'm sitting here tonight, are my two colleagues who have been on council with me, Ms. Mealy and Mrs. Katz, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm with four brand-new council members. I've gotta say, from my ten years on council, I've been impressed by their ability to just jump right in. They have a grasp of things that I greatly appreciate because it's gonna help us move forward, but I just wanna, I'd like to give, us give them a round of applause because they've stepped up. And we're probably gonna have a quizzo some night here instead of a council meeting, but just to raise a few bucks, you know, help the budget, but we're gonna have a good time. Comments? And welcome to our new mayor, Mr. Slaughter. We're looking forward to interacting and cooperating and working together... We're looking forward to interacting and cooperating and working together. We've done a lot of that while we were on council, and I don't think that's going to change at all in the future, that dynamic. Do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight?
I'd like to see a change in your attitude to thank Mrs. Frank for all the time you've spent with us. And congratulate the new council members. It is exciting to see, obviously, four new ones, and that we look forward to working with you all. And other thing, today is National Law Enforcement Day, so I just, Councilmember Mackey as well as a former police officer, so just thanking all of our men and women who serve and protect us day in and day out, and I look forward to working with you all as well, so it's exciting.
We're off to a good start. Yeah, it's great having, I mean, the demographic of council has lowered, so I feel younger, so it's really good. Are there any comments from the public tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.